Good evening and welcome. My name is Adam Block and I'm Chair of the Needham Planning Board. And funding a quorum, I call this meeting to order although the because Natasha is remote. I have to do a world hall attendance. All right, Alex, thank you very much. For the record, when I call your name, please signify that you are present. Paul Alpert. Artie Crocker. Natasha Spata.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
And from our planning staff, our Director Lee Newman.
Present.
And our Assistant Planning Director Alex Plea. Nice to see you all this evening, virtually and in reality. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner and is consistent with current state regulations. And is being recorded. All materials for this meeting, including the agenda are available on the town's website at needhamma.gov. The first item on our agenda this evening is an A and R plan for the property located at 133 South Street. With us for the petitioners, our Attorney David Himmelberger remotely, the surveyor Paul Bulo. From Field Resources and the property owner Helen Peters, but first I'd like to ask our Planning Director Lee, is the plan compliant?
Yes, it is.
And then do my colleagues have any comments or questions on the plan?
I have none.
Artie, Natasha, Paul. Seems straightforward to me. Then on that basis, can I have a motion to endorse the A and R plan?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. We've dispensed with item one. Thank you very much. We'll, we'll sign it. Yeah, we have it here. All right. Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Best of luck.
We represented our WACAM meeting proceeding a few years back. David.
The next item on our agenda is a de minimis change. Application in respect of the major project site plan special permit number nineteen ninety-eight dash eleven for the property located at one seventeen Kendrick Street with one seventeen Kendrick D E L L C and Bullfitch affiliate as the petitioner. Which is to add a loading bay with us. Today are from Bullfinch, we have Mike Wilcox, the SVP of leasing, Attorney Tim Smith and Traffic Engineer Sean Manning. Traffic Engineer Sean Manning.
Attorney Tim Sullivan.
I thought I already mentioned it.
You said Smith.
I said Tim Smith.
Yes.
Thanks for correcting me for the record.
Call me whatever.
Call me Al. Al, why don't we have the Bullfinch Day, all the Sollivans and all the Smiths on each side of the Charles. For the record, Mike and I are both members of the Needham Council of Economic Advisors. This subject has not been reviewed or discussed by the CEA. For the is the Architect Jeremy, he should be the, we can start and
Oh, thank you.
For the record, we received the
Yeah.
For the record, we received the following comments from town departments. A memo dated November twelve from the Design Review Board approving the design proposed change. By email dated November sixteen from Building Commissioner Joe Promdak with no concerns. By email dated November sixteen from Fire Chief Conroy saying the project looks good from his point of view. By email dated November twenty eighth from Police Chief Schlittler asking whether the truck would block the sidewalk. And was otherwise fine. We have an email dated November thirty from Attorney Tim Sullivan responding to Chief Schlittler's concern. Saying that the vehicles will not block the driveway. And then we have by email dated December four from Police Chief as a follow up to his email November twenty eight saying that he's now okay with the project. Having reviewed Tim's response, that would be Tim Sullivan, not Tim Smith. By letter dated November thirty from Town Engineer Tom Rider. Saying that it's not ideal for a truck to back into the drive, but he has no comment or objection on the size of the truck or the weekly delivery and having reviewed the email from Tim. Saying that he was okay, having reviewed Tim's response. So Tim, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. Thank you. For the record, Tim Sullivan goes in stores, Sean Manning at VHB and Michael Fox from Bullfinch. So we're here again, we were here on October seventeenth to meet with the board about a proposed minor modification to the special permit for one seventeen Kendrick. At that meeting, we talked about the proposal, which was, is to add a limited service loading bay on the third avenue side of the, for the building for special deliveries. So one to two times per week. The reason is, you know, for really to make the space more attractive to life science tenants who need these deliveries. So the deliveries don't have to go through the main space, the lobby and other office areas. On the seventeenth, we talked about the nature of this, there's no GFA change, there's no building footprint change, the loading bay complies with zoning. And so the direction we got from the board was, was to pursue this as a minor amendment. So at that time, or after that rather. We submitted an application to the Design Review Board. We reviewed the third avenue elevations with them and what we were proposing. They unanimously approved it. And then we filed the application. So the application was a letter from me requesting it as well as a site plan. A memo from VHB about the traffic and no traffic impacts and the application form. So the thought, if it, if it's okay with Chair and the board is to sort of briefly go through the attachment I didn't mention, which was my letter, which was the presentation we gave on the seventeenth. And just as a reminder and to highlight what we're doing. So with that, so on the screen is the presentation, we have hard copies if anyone would like them or over here for you. So, so this is just an area view of the site. I think people are familiar, but it fronts on Kendrick Street on the corner of Kendrick and Third Avenue. This is a site plan, just the site plan of the building highlighted in white here with the parking, the orientation here slightly different. So you see Kendrick is on the right side of the image on Third Avenue on the bottom. So as I mentioned before, the, the idea here is that to make the space in orange attractive and marketable to a life science tenant to have a limited, a limited loading bay. So that would be on the third avenue side, which is in the bottom of this floor plan. The top is where the existing loading bay is. All the deliveries will continue to go there for the building. But this also shows that if you were to have these limited deliveries come in that loading bay, you'd have to go through the common area and other office space to get to this space. And this is the, the reason we're doing it. At our last meeting, we reviewed the location of the loading bay, which is shown on this slide. On Third Avenue, it's effectively a curb cut into an area that already has pavement there. And we went through the nature of this one to two times a week, special deliveries based on other similar sites. And we, we included that information in our presentation last time. The typical delivery vehicles, we talked to the last meeting, this is really for vans and smaller trucks as opposed to large delivery vehicles. And that's what's in this presentation to show those representative vehicles. And then a few slides to go through the movements. So if the vehicle's traveling down Third Ave. It backs into the space and backs out, which is what's, or in drives out frontwards, which is shown on, on these few sides here, how the movements would work with the vans and then with the smaller trucks. The exterior elevations, these are the elevations that we reviewed. This is the existing condition. And as you can see, there's existing pavement sidewalk in this area right here where the loading bay will be in the windows. And then the proposed condition with the little bit of lag here with the loading bay. And then there's a second existing conditions and a second image of the loading bay. These are the elevations we reviewed and that were approved by the Design, Designer View Board. And then finally, the traffic operations, this is what's in VHB's memo. Showing that the queues are short enough that it, they don't interfere with the loading dock operations. VHB also did a gap study to make sure that the movements wouldn't interfere with or have any impact on Third Avenue. So in summary, you know, as we had mentioned at the last meeting, we see this as a minor amendment. It doesn't change the traffic operations. It complies with zoning and there's no changes to GFA or whatever you like. That's the overview. We're here to take questions and, and answer anything we can.
I'll start with my colleagues to see if anyone has any comments or questions.
No.
Artie?
No, this is what, what we saw before.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Jean?
All my questions were answered at the informal presentation and re- referred here. No questions.
Natasha?
I think all of mine were also, but I had one question just to make sure I understand. The, the pedestrian experience adjacent to the, to the driveway. Is there any way you can go back to that plan? I just want to make sure that it's safe for people to we had mentioned maybe putting bollards or something next to it so that somebody wouldn't be hit if they're trying to walk into the building. I'm sure most people park on the other side of the building or there's some type of delineation or demarcation on the ground. Cause there's an entrance right next to the, the driveway.
So I'll, I'll take a shot and then Sean or Jeremy can jump in or Mike. So you can see in this image here that there is a doorway there. That's not the, the main entrance to the building. But it is, there is a delineated walkway. The sidewalk continues and the trucks back into the loading bay. So people can continue to walk along that sidewalk along Third Avenue there. If you want to add anything or
I, I mean, I, I think it's a good comment. I, I, I think, you know, when we, when we looked at it more carefully and just understood the amount of pedestrian activity. The slowness of the vehicles and the infrequency of the vehicles being only one or two times a week. It just didn't seem warranted. To us, if it was a lot higher pedestrian traffic and a lot higher truck activity here, maybe it's something you would consider, but our feeling is, you know, when you drive by, it's going to look like this most of the time. It's really quiet, both on the pedestrian and vehicle front.
Understood. Well, you have bollards at these locations here and here or towards the building so that it, the truck doesn't hit the building?
I can
I, I, I guess probably not a bad idea actually to protect the building. That's typically why you do it.
So we, we do have just below the the, the head curtain and the bumper seal that's on the, that's around the perimeter of the door. You can see two small, yeah, rectangles. Those are, those are building bumpers. So those are braced into some structural members to prevent the building from hitting the, the building.
Right.
And also we have, we do have tactical, tactile, I should say barriers. So the bumped bumped mats that you see at every sidewalk transition.
These areas here, like on the sides or
It would be on the, on the public sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you.
Right.
Paul? So given what I see of the plans, I'm not that familiar with the area. I've never really driven much there. I question how much pedestrian traffic there really is at this site on Third Avenue. I would imagine that there isn't much because I don't know that there's a lot of walking going to and from buildings. Is it anticipated that going in and out of this new space will be from Third Avenue or will people be parking on the other side and going through the common area to get to this space? In terms, you know, I'm thinking again in terms of pedestrian traffic. So Will people be parking on Third Avenue and then walking in here?
I'll defer to Mike. I think you're right. There isn't a lot of pedestrian traffic and there also aren't a lot of trucks. It's only one or two times a week that there's truck here. So, but as far as how the people circulate into the building.
I mean, you show the site plan, this would just be for service. The people coming in and out of the building would basically come through three major access points, which is facing Kendrick Street, there's an entry facing, if you will, the the north side facing FedEx and then up where the existing loading dock is, there's an entry. So you see all the parking sort of surrounds the building. So this is
That's my point.
Yeah. So it's service only. It's not a, you know, a point of contact for people walking into the building per se.
All the parking is on the other side of the building. So people are going to enter even for presumably this new tenant, when you get one, people either the people who work there or the people who will be visiting there, will be parking their cars on the other sides and walking in at the closest entrance, walking through the building in order to get here.
Exactly. This, this, this loading dock and driveway is only for the service component. There's no pedestrian anticipated access there.
Anyone else have anything? So then we, our next step is you'll have a decision.
No, my next step is I move that we accept this as a, as a minor modification.
Well, I don't have a decision to finish. I was meant to prepare.
Don't we have to accept it as a minor modification so that we don't have to have a hearing?
We usually do.
And then Such a vote, don't they? I've already did on October seventeenth.
Did we do that on October seventeenth?
I don't know if we officially
No, you suggested that they make an application.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we had to do that. So yes, go ahead and do that if you wanted.
I, I'm moving to accept this as a minor modification.
All right. We have a motion by Paul, a second by Artie. Any discussion? Hearing that will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. We've unanimously resolved that this is a minor modification and then we will
We'll vote on the motion on
On the decision. Which will be in two weeks. I declare this out of disposal. Thank you all very much.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Mr. Sullivan goes to walk. Very good. So this brings us to the Board of Appeals. There are four cases to be heard by the ZBA on December fourteenth. I note that thirty Wilshire Park and one, and sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue are two of the four cases before the ZBA in the fourteenth. So I'm not sure there's a new need for the board to comment on those cases. The next case is four eighty Hillside.
Mister Chair, before you go any further, this property is across the street from the Rosemary, across Hillside Avenue from the Roseberry Ridge condominium.
Yes.
And although it's not visible from my own unit, I am a member of the Board of Trustees of the Roseberry Ridge condominium. So for any discussion regarding this, I recuse myself.
Okay. So we'll ask you to step outside then. Thank you for disclosing. And we'll call you in in probably sixty seconds or less. All right. But it's an opportunity to stretch your legs, take advantage.
I, I will know however, that I, I did not get notice of, of the ZBA hearing and that is surprising. You know, with a condominium, every unit owner is supposed to get written notice or special permit here and I would then
Thank you very much.
I do.
So for the case before, for the ZBA, four sixty Hillside relates to communication equipment. Lee, how significant is it that a meeting of the butter was not noticed? Or is it, do they have to be noticed yet? If the meeting is on the fourteenth and it's
Well, it might have gone to the, I don't know who, I don't, I, I, I'll check to find out what happened. That's a condominium association. So I don't know what the who the notice was sent to, if it was sent to a representative of the condominium. Although generally goes to all the representatives, but I, I, I'll have that checked to find out if it's confirmed. That, that, that's really not our issue.
Okay.
Would be a ZBA issue if there was a problem with the notice. And I doubt that there was, but I'll, I'll check the, because that's usually based off the assessor's database. And mailing is not their database.
It's ironic because it's a question of communication and the underlying application of a communication.
What's the timing of the notices? Is it seven days?
It has to go out, it just has to go out ahead of the public hearing.
So could it be two days ahead of the public hearing?
There's no, there is no notice, there is no requirement in terms of when that has to go out. And there's, there's, there's no law, there's a specified when the legal notice has to be posted. Every fourteen days prior to the date of the public hearing has to be posted. It has to be in the paper at least in fourteen days, the first notice has to run prior to the hearing. But there is nothing in the statute that speaks about when the notices have to be received or mailed out, although they're supposed to go out in a timely way.
That's interesting.
When they go, these ones, when they go out?
This statute doesn't
These, these ones, when they go out, they have to get a receipt back? There's the, there's some of them.
No, I don't think we're not, they're, they're not going out certified mailing. What happens is basically the assessors, basically the address is shared with the assessors. And the assessors provide us with a certified set or the department with a certified list of who are the legal letters. And that is to who the legal notices then mail based upon the assessors listening.
So other than that, is there, is anyone have any comments? All shaking their head.
Not four sixty, no.
And Natasha, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
No, as you wish. So then
I move that we make no comment.
We have a motion by Paul to vote no comment on this. A second by Natasha. Any discussion? Hearing that will come to the vote. Paul?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. We note for the record that, that Jean McKnight has recused herself and she has not voted. So this brings us to three twenty Grove Street, but I'm going to allow a moment for our colleague to resettle. Three twenty Grove Street relates to the desire of a homeowner to demolish their existing single family house and to build a new single family house. To make it more resistant, I think, to some flooding issues that they appear to have had based on their, the material in our packet. Does anyone have a common or question on this case?
I guess the, the only question I have is, I mean, I, I don't quite understand exactly what's going. So you, they're, they're wanting to raise it up. I can't, I can't tell what they're trying to do.
So it's, so further, so in the materials, they have their, their elevation plan, they have all their architecturals, but effectively they're demolishing their house and creating it a bit more resistant to flooding. I don't think that they're raising their house to go beyond, I didn't see beyond thirty-five feet. So
My, my, so are they reducing their setback with twenty five system seat?
So they, they have a pre-existing non-conforming? Is that right?
Yeah.
So when the house was built, Artie.
There is no
When the house was built, the setback was fifteen feet. When we had the large house amendment in twenty seventeen. We extended that to twenty-five feet. And they're saying that if they have to build this house twenty-five feet from the property, they'll they because of where the wetlands are located and where the flooding is occurring.
It's hardship.
It's a hardship.
Yeah, understood.
They do, they do seem to be looking at the plan that shows the existing and they, they are kind of moving moving a large portion of the house
That I have to get away from to get a little bit higher ground.
I think it's
If what the plan is
Is it the kind of thing where the ZBA may regard that as a hardship?
I think that, I, the ZBA, I think because of the shape of a lot, because of soils, because of, of constraints of that high spec, those are legitimate reasons to grant the variance. They would need to, they would need to demonstrate the thing you just said for
It's, it's probably fine. My, it's probably fine. I'm just, my, my only comment was to make sure that anything they do in their lot has not been going down, to use your phrase, going, going to their neighbor's lot. Is there isn't, there is a neighbor south of there.
They have an, Artie, just on that point, every homeowner and property owner has that, it's an affirmative obligation.
I, I know that. I understand that. But it doesn't always seem to work.
I mean, we've had people complaining to us.
I know.
Runoff from
Yeah. So Lee and I actually had a conversation on a related talk, directly related topic with Charis and Tom Rider today. You know, about that issue and there, there are circumstances like every legal case before you or a gene. And you know, already every solar installation that you do has unique features and same with you Natasha. You know, when you're designing buildings, each piece of property has its own unique features and conditions. And that in part affects and there has been, there have been reported instances to us where in particular a builder has, you know, was building a larger house. Where because there's less, there's more impervious space. It's creating runoff onto a neighbor's property. And the town is all, is, you know, is already whipping into its, our stormwater bylaw to modify some of the requirements and provisions. Yes.
I, I have no substantive comment on this. I leave it up to the zoning board of appeals to make its determination. But I have a process question. And that is, under the circumstances of a prior non-conforming structure and the rebuilding of a prior non-conforming structure, even though it's with the same kind of non-conformity. Even though it's going to be at a different part of the lot for the reasons that we discussed about elevation and so forth. Wouldn't the appropriate process be to apply under chapter forty-eight, section six for a finding of the zoning board of appeals that the, the reconstructed building is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity? Or at least if there was a concern about, well, gee, I'm not sure which I should be applying for to kind of apply for the variance as a backup. But the primary thing would be yes, the special permit finding under chapter forty-eight, section six.
The building inspector or the ZBA historically, when they demolish a house, they haven't gone they've required the issuance of a variance, but the house is gone. And if you have a vacant lot
How long ago?
Then it's been treated as new construction.
Gee, I How long ago was the house demolished?
Oh, it hasn't been, it's still living there.
I couldn't tell that they were, was demolished yet.
That was the direction that came from the building department. That, that, that once the house, once the house is demolished.
But if this house is not
Well, but it's got to be demolished.
They lose their
You're, you're, you're starting with a clean slate. I understand what you're saying. You're saying it's already pre-existing non-conforming, why don't they apply for a special permit?
Exactly.
You're going to put something back. It's, it's non-conforming, but
Reconstruction.
I give you But I did read our bylaws earlier today. And my reading of the bylaws was that when you have a totally new construction of a single family residence. It's a little bit different in the commercial zone. But in the residential zones, when you're totally tearing it down and building a brand new house. The special permit provisions don't apply in our bylaws. The variance provision applies. It's just the way it's worded.
It's unusual because the, it just, this, these, these rights with respect to prior non-conforming structures arises under state law. And we're implementing state law and reconstruction is one of the things you can do under chapter forty-eight, section six.
But that's the question as to whether it's a reconstruction. I think, I think that if they were just building on the same footprint. Then it might be considered a reconstruction.
Okay.
But they're expanding the footprint.
Okay. I'll, I'll let it go. I, I just wanted to raise that.
I shift up to the ZBA.
Yeah. Because, you know.
I also
Okay. I, I just wondered to make, wondered why they were following that process because it's very unusual for our zoning board of appeals to grant variances. And it would be more not more
I also questioned in my mind, I, I didn't think that they presented the evidence as to why they couldn't put the house elsewhere on the lot. I don't think that they really made the argument as to why. Because this is a huge piece of property that goes back and I don't, it's not showing whether there where there are wetlands back there. It's not showing what the, what the elevations are back there. So I don't know if they couldn't put, build the house in the back Put, they build the house in the back. Father back in the lot and just extend their driveway. But I think those are questions that the ZBA will raise on their own and there's no reason for us to.
Actually hire a lawyer and to, and to do, and to provide that level of detail to give the ZBA the foundation it would need to grant the variance.
Yeah.
But it's really, that's that would be part of the application.
Jean?
Not enough.
Oh, I was just going to say, I wasn't able to print out, for some reason, my, my computer would not print out the plan. But I did look at it on my computer screen and it does have elevations.
Yes.
But I agree that the. Um.
Right.
Doesn't it, has elevations right through the lot?
Just right.
No, because the lot extends all the way back here. This is all their land back here.
Way back there.
Way back here.
Oh, I didn't realize that. I thought it was just the portions in the front with the.
No, they've got two and a half, they've got two point six acres. I think this is all.
Okay, I misunderstood then.
Well, I mean, one question, question I have is that. I understand hardship, I understand water issues and so forth, but they're getting rid, rid of one size house and building a house that's. Fifty percent larger or something like that. So it's not, it's not, it's not like they're taking it down and having to rebuild it and fix the problem that was there with water. They're simply making a much larger house and then saying, well, shouldn't we be allowed to make it much closer to the property line? I'm not quite certain how that.
Closer to the property line than they already are.
Yes.
No, I, I understand that, but it.
They're still less than a twenty, twenty-five.
I understand that, but it, but it's a much larger house, so more of it is closer to the plot, more of it was closer to the parking lot. More is it in that, between that twenty-five and fifteen foot zone, so it's, so it's not quite the same thing as rebuilding it to fix a problem.
Are you saying that given the size of the lot and the size of the house they're building? Why, what, what is the hardship? Why can't they build the new house? Following the existing setbacks? Is that the question?
Well, Paul, Paul made that comment with, with the size of the lot they have available. Where, where's, where's the, where's the comments that it has to be where it is? My comment is more based on the fact that. Yes, they're, they're, they want to rebuild their house. But they're not exactly building their house, they're, they're building, they're taking it down and building a house that's fif- that's fifty percent larger. And so a lot more of it is, is non-conforming. So they're making a non-conforming s- situation, more non-conforming. They're not making it less non-conforming. That's not quite the same thing. It's most.
Presently fifteen feet from the property.
I understand that, but more than, but more house will now be non-conforming.
It's, yeah, but the house is still only going to be seventeen and a half feet from the property line. It's still going to be two and a half feet. Far away from the property line than the house presently is.
Yes.
It's just that we changed the zoning from fifteen feet to twenty-five feet.
I understand that, I'm, no, I understand. I'm, I mean, of course, we're going to let the, you know, ZBA take care of it, what's going on. I'm just saying that. Um, we, we have comments that we can put through. It seems like we should make some comments here.
I found it interesting from what I read that the conservation commission is allowing them to. To expand over the twenty-five foot mobile zone.
They had to have gone to Concom for that.
Yes, they went to Concom.
Yeah. I think because of, I think because of their hardship and I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they minimized the amount.
So they convinced Concom of this.
Yeah.
Because that's when I was on the Concom.
That was hard.
Like, you know, I was on the Concom for twenty, for nine years. And we allowed somebody to, to build in the twenty-five foot zone once. In the nine years that I was on it and that they convinced us that there was a hardship there, so.
So I, so the question is, do we comment and are the comments within our scope?
No, I, 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 I wouldn't move that we make no comment.
So we have a motion by Paul to move no comment. We have a second. A second by Natasha.
Second, yes.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Um. Uh.
But I enjoy this discussion.
Artie, Artie, you did say that you wanted to, to make a comment.
No, 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 it's, it's, no, I did say that.
Do you want to make another motion?
No, 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 I did say that. The, the, the ZBA knows what they're doing. They have, they'll have all the, they'll have all the ducks. They'll know how to shoot and deal with it.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're all lawyers, I guess.
Uh, this brings us to the. Uh, minutes of September nineteen. And, um. Uh, let me just pull those. All right, so on page one, Artie. There was a comment attributed to you. In the, uh, paragraph above the motion on page one. If you want to just end the sentence at noise. That seems to make the most sense.
I need to make some, I'm looking at now, I need to make sure which, which. Which item we're talking about here.
A little further.
Talking about the common room, um.
Mr. Parker's.
I think I was simply talking about the, when you open up the whole, uh, thinking about the noise within the restaurant, I, I don't know. I can't tell what I was talking about there. Oh, the, oh, then they say think about acoustic tiles. Yeah, it simply has to do with the noise within the restaurant, how important it is. Noise with closing off and open rest, yeah, it's, I think that's, right now, the restaurant is, oh, the kitchen is opened. So, so restaurant, and then they're going to wall it off. And kind of make a narrower space. So I was, I was relating the, I was speaking to that, that point, that's all.
Do you, do you want to delete the phrase with closing off an open restaurant or clarify it?
Um, I think where noise. Um, well, what was the one? Uh, closing off, closing off the kitchen. We can just say, think about the noise with closing off the kitchen and creating a narrow, narrow. Narrow corridor, narrow, narrower part, narrower part of the restaurant. We can say that, that'll help clarify what I was thinking about.
And creating a narrower.
Narrow, narrow portion of the restaurant.
Of the, uh, restaurant or the dining area?
Uh, dining area.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. This brings us to page two, a comment I said. This relates to eight eighty-eight Great Plains. Mr. Block asked. What the, uh, so here when I was referring to. They mentioned, George had mentioned that the fourth floor, like Artie had asked in a previous. Uh, informal session with the developer to push the fourth floor back. So I was curious what the setback. From the, from the, from the fourth floor, not the third floor.
Business, uh. Well, eighty-eight Great Plains. But the, from the roof of the fourth floor?
What the setback, uh, was of the fourth floor.
On the fourth floor. Fourth floor from the edge of the building, oh. What the setback would be from the. Roof edge?
Or front facade.
Uh, what, what it say?
Front facade.
Front facade.
Okay, fr- front facade.
Of the fourth floor still?
Um.
Of the fourth story.
So Mr. Black asked what the setback of the fourth story.
On the roof? With the setback of the fourth story on the roof.
Would be from.
Well, what it meant was the edge of the front facade.
Right.
He said.
On the edge of.
I, I understand what you're saying, I'm just trying to figure out.
This is what I have. Mr. Black asked what the setback would be from the front facade of the fourth story.
Perfect.
Can we, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. So then, Paul, you're on page three, second last paragraph.
I'm right here.
And this, uh, is also about eight eighty-eight Great Plains.
Yeah, I'm sure, um. Yeah, we still talked about eighty-eight.
I think you wanted to make sure that when cars are coming out of the parking lot. Out of the driveway, that there was enough line of sight.
Free Adam, I think that's what he was trying to say.
Back for extra cars coming out.
I think it's, it's just to make sure that there's a space. Um, to be able to see and then so that, so that the cars aren't going directly onto the street, that there's. A setback to allow for the cars to, um. So be able to have better visibility, maybe, better visibility and.
So need li- need line of sight.
Automobile stress on Great Plains Avenue was not something I would have said.
Sightline was the word that was used.
Yeah. Sightline sounds right. Automobile sightline on Great Plains Avenue.
So.
He wants.
Instead of setback, it's sightline.
Yeah.
And Great Plains Avenue needs to be believed and. He wants the building to be set back.
No, I think he, he wants a safe sightline. For exiting vehicles.
Okay.
Yes, because I'm anticipating that cars are going to park on Great Plains Avenue. Even though there, there are spaces in the basement of the building, it's underground. You're on Great Plains Avenue, people are going to naturally just. They're going to be, if, if they're going into the retail establishment, which are on the ground floor.
Yes.
They're just going to want to pull up to the curb, get out of the car, go. Go into the space. I'm concerned about the cars com- coming out of the parking.
As we are.
Coming out of the parking garage.
All right, so then that brings us to also on page three, there's trade routes. I, I.
Could be the spice trade.
Am I eleven year old?
Uh, this is all, uh, Mr. Black.
So this was referring to. You know, the route, like Great Plains Avenue. As. Uh, Great Plains Avenue effectively. Um. Uh, you know, movement on Great Plains.
Maybe it's pedestrian routes need to be planned more efficiently. No, you wouldn't say that. I mean, that's not a terminology sounds.
Deleting.
Or, or, delete the sentence, let's delete the sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it's not to say I don't want to.
You don't like trade routes, if, we get it. The trade routes, you know.
Then there are three spots on page five. Um. And Natasha, you're up. This relates to solar energy.
I feel something should be added.
She has a thought.
It would not count, there's, Artie and I are speaking apparently in this paragraph. This is a joint effort, let's see. Uh, the, the area of solar is counted towards maximum lot coverage of that building. So when I creep and noted, it would not count if on top of the building. I count on impervious area, but it's.
You see, it says here you had a thought, but you didn't say what the thought was.
I, 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 she feels something should be added. I don't really know what that means, so I, if we could take that out and then.
Didn't have to do with charging.
And that, and that she asks if solar canopies should be on the parking lots. I would just cut out, or do you want to keep it?
I think, I think Paul's right. You were talking about charging stations. Generally speaking, you were saying that you think that those should be added.
Uh huh.
But I think.
Charging stations, right.
But I think that we should delete the sentence in yellow. We would delete, she had a thought of solar canopies should be on parking lots. Unless you don't think that they should be.
I would delete that sentence. I just keep, she feels something should be added.
Very good.
Wait, so something should be added about, um, electric charging stations?
About electric charging stations.
Okay.
Now, Lee to you. Ms. Newman noted large scale or by special permit in the overlay.
I, I, I put in the word special permit. I wasn't sure if the. The distinction was being made between large scale by special permit and allowed by right.
Yes, I, I think I was, so I should say large scale ground mounted facilities are allowed by special permit in the overlay.
Yeah, and then, um. And then Mr. Crocker responds. He does not know if it hurts the town to have a medium scale erase allowed by right. I think that's.
That.
I, I don't know if I would have said, I, I don't know what I said, I don't know exactly what I would have said, very allowed by.
It, it, it's insignificant, one way or the other.
Yeah.
And then, although just to be clear. What we've, the last thing that we all pretty much agreed to is that. Small scale ground mounted would be by right, which is up to fifteen hundred square feet. And medium scale, which is between fifteen hundred square feet and forty thousand square feet. Would be by right with site plan review, not special permit.
So.
Uh, so, so we're going to keep it as is and that's fine.
So it would say, Mr., um. Mr. Crocker stated, um.
He does not know if it hurts the town to have medium scale.
If, he does not know if it hurts the town to have medium scale allowed by right.
Yes.
Okay, we'll leave it alone, yeah.
Um.
Put it like that.
Would someone like to make a motion to? Oh, there is one, I thought. Uh, I. Sure, we can add that as to, and have any medical.
Yeah, I think this, this was just a report, but it wasn't clear what the contract with G P I was concerning.
Right.
It is for that.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
Okay.
If you'd like to make a.
I will move that we accept the minutes of September nineteen, twenty twenty-three. Uh, as redlined, uh, with the changes discussed at this meeting.
Uh, we have a motion by Jean, a second by.
Second.
By Artie. Any dis- uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Uh, Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Natasha Spata?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the report from, uh, our planning staff. We, Alex, do somebody to report?
Sure, um, just so everybody knows, the, the planning department budget was submitted to the town manager's office and I'm going to be meeting. The, the liaison from the finance committee that has been assigned to the planning board are, are, are my department are. John Conley and, um, Josh Levy. So I'm going to be meeting with them, um, on Friday of this week, let's go over any questions that they have. On this submittal, um, and then, um, Adam, remember if I told you yet or not, we're going to go in front of the finance committee on, on January twenty-fourth. And answer any questions that they have on the, uh, on the departmental budget. And I think I shared a copy of the, the budget with you.
You did.
I think in an earlier, uh, packet that was, that was distributed, so that's kind of moving forward.
Do you typically do that? Do you typically meet with in com members?
Yeah, they, they normally assign a liaison. Some, some years, their, the liaisons are very active and they're very good about contacting me and. Asking questions, they go over the budget. Other years, um, they're not so good, um.
Do you want planning board?
No, I don't, I don't, no. I, I, it's just that meeting, I could use you myself, uh, with them. But then, at the meeting that we go, that we go to the big time, yes.
Okay.
I, I want you.
I'll be, I. I'd be curious what questions. You know, they ask.
Yeah.
And, um.
Am I recalling that you're bringing in more staff?
I'm putting in more staff. The questions, I think, the questions they have is, I've asked, you know, for, have the planning. Uh, the sixty thousand dollars replenished, because they've basically spent all that money down. So they want to know, because we've actually had appropriations, I think, two different years, uh, one for fifty thousand, one for sixty thousand. They want to know how all the money's been spent, um, in the past, how was, where we spent it, so I'm, I'm putting that together. Um, the other thing I'm asking for is, um, replenishing of a small repair grant program. They want to understand, even though we committed the fund, some of these elderly people are not. Actually doing the work super fast. So not, not all the money's actually gone out the door, even though it's contractually obligated. They want information on that. Um, and, and then I think, yes, you're right, I'd ask for a planner. Um, and I've asked, um, to have the administrative staff person's hours increased from part-time to full-time. So I, I'm not sure what questions they're going to have from the planner position. Yeah, so I'll let you know how that fares.
Problem, a minimum. You know, what's the incremental increase in staff cost?
Eight thousand.
Is that including the planner and the full-time?
The planner was eighty thousand and the, I got the top of my head, I think the administrative was under, around ten or twelve thousand.
To go from part-time to full-time?
Mm-hmm.
For one person and more.
For one person. Well, actually, I'm not going to have her go full-time. She's not interested in going full-time, so. For one person, well, actually, I'm not gonna have her go full-time, she's not interested in going full-time, so I'm gonna hire. Somebody else to kind of come in for the differential.
I see. So that's, so.
That's how, that's how we structured it.
That's probably what I would expect, and then. They may wanna pin it on some critical things, so if they have any, anything. Any questions that they have. You know, feel free to, you know, have them follow up with me.
Sure, and I actually, I wrote a whole narrative on the on planning studies on the work that we wanted to do.
Yes, I saw those included in your.
And so I documented what what our projects were and why we needed the money, um, so.
When you say to hire a planner, is. That just a replacement of the. Person who left to go over to town hall?
Oh, you mean, no, that was the economic development director.
Okay.
This this is the planner, I mean, could you?
In addition, in addition to hiring a new e- economic development.
No, that's the the economic development manager position is no longer, has not for years. Been under the planning department, who was under the town manager's office.
Or was.
And that's why the position was moved physically from here. Over to.
She she got a new title.
Well. But we still now have. So Amy is now the director of communications.
Right.
When she was first hired. That position.
Was that was transferred, when Deborah left, the position went outside, the the that position.
So Deborah was part of the planning department.
Right, and then when they left.
The position moved over to.
Town manager's office.
Town manager's office, okay. So, that is a. Hole in our budget, that if we hire a new planner, we're just kind of. Getting the same amount of money that we're getting.
That's interesting.
That we were getting when Deborah was here.
I don't think they quite see it that way, but.
So they won't, but it's an argument.
It's an interesting concept.
Um, I should know this, cause I did me read your report, but the planner, is this to replace Karen Soonaborg?
No, this is an addition to Karen Soonaborg.
In addition to the replacement for Karen Soonaborg.
Karen Soonaborg's position is is that we're advertising, she's leaving and.
She's leaving, that's what I understand.
She wants to leave, that's gonna be very difficult to find a replacement for.
So are we going to be hiring a consultant uh to replace Karen?
I have advertised the position.
Of her position?
It's current, I mean, cause she has a position.
Oh, and I see, she has a position, there's money for that position, and you wanna find another person.
I wanna find another person, I just don't know if I'm gonna be able to tell everyone, you know.
Yeah.
It's very difficult, since a lot of towns basically have moved away from actually having a housing planner. On their staff, because they can't find the skill staff when it's a part-time person. So they saw the agency that are basically providing that service, that's what's happening in Sudbury and Lexington. And we've been, we've been lucky that we had Karen fulfilling that role, um. I don't know if we're gonna be so successful this time, I, it's been advertised, I got two applications.
There were, there were a number of people that applied for. Some of the planning position before that. There's some of our committees that had. Housing developments.
We reached out to some of those people, I mean, we reached out.
Woman who had worked at City of Newton.
We reached out.
What, you know, can give you a job there, she wanted to interrupt.
She has, I don't know, she has a position, she's. Taking a part-time position, working for a nonprofit. And and I don't know that she wants to work those extra hours, we have reached out to her. She told her that it was available, um.
Yeah, she would have been a good one.
That's all I can do.
Is Karen continuing to work as a consultant in this field?
Yes, but she's cutting back on her hours.
Oh, so the prospect of hiring can't, uh, hiring her as a consultant rather than as an employee is not feasible.
No, I don't, no.
Um, she's so good.
She's so, well, she has all those, she's just, you know, she has wonderful skills.
Yes.
I mean, and that's why all these other towns are hiring her across the state.
I happen to read her.
That skill set here was um.
I happened to read her Yarmouth housing plan. And it's so much like our housing plan, and I said, oh, that's where the housing plan came from, it was really Karen. Not and not so much it came up with what it is we will do, but how we will present it. You know, in the plan, it was so well done, oh, I miss her, so I'm gonna miss.
She's not gone yet, you know, and I told her, I was told her I was gonna try to see what I could do by the beginning of the year. And I think she's gonna leave me hanging dry, we're good friends, so.
Yeah.
So is there, uh, does anyone else have anything to report, or do you have anything else to report on?
Uh, just you know, we, you know, we we have to, um. The plan is to get the solar zoning and the housing authority zoning ready to go by the second meeting, January. And so I'm hoping to have another draft on the solar for the next meeting, uh, Artie and.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Thursday, roughly midday, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There, and I'm hoping that the housing authority meeting is gonna be informative so that we can get that draft done.
So the, oh, so just to go back to solar. There are just a couple. I think, I think there's just a couple of. Areas of clarification that Artie and I will resolve on Thursday, so so we next meet. We will finalize. This, you know, effectively.
We're hoping we can get there.
Yeah.
But we have to get there, we have to get there, we have to get there by the middle of January.
Otherwise, yeah, otherwise we're just gonna punt it and we'll deal with it later, uh, but I I'm confident that we will. Um, I had a question about home. I, when is the, when's the next community meeting, is that in January?
The next community meeting is on January the twenty-fifth.
January.
No, no, January eighteen.
January eighteen.
Natasha. So we have a meeting, Lee, on December twentieth?
We have a meeting on December twentieth and I think on January the fourth. We have a meeting on the twenty-fifth, the community meeting is the eighteen. Okay, that's what that would be, so the community meeting is the eighteen, I guess the committee needs then soon after that on the twenty-fifth, but the next meetings for the committee. Are December the twentieth. Um, and and January the fourth. And also, we have, you know, I distributed. The, with the, I distributed by email. The collective decision that we had made regarding um. Um, how we were gonna treat modeling as it relates to HERSI. And we had, you know, requests from a committee member that that not to be discussed at a committee meeting. So I'm I'm gonna speak with, um, I'm gonna speak with Katie, it made it make sense for us to do a Zoom meeting quickly. And to go through the rationale for not why we chose not to, you know, model HERSI at at this time. And let the full committee discuss it, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak with Katie tomorrow and I'll be reaching out with Austin, you and Heidi and. Looking for a date for Zoom meeting, or where we can just do that.
So my question was, I. About this uh central business district. And in particular. Is there. As the home committee yet discussed. Whether and how to. Uh, modify the, uh, one of the overlays to the central business district?
No, we haven't decided how we're gonna modify any overlays, I think what the home committee has decided to do is to. Include a portion of the center business district and it's in as an initial modeling effort. I'm kind of pretty almost like a uh, a loop that goes around with town hall to connect. The lower chest part of the corridor with the higher portion of the Highland Avenue corner, so that the M B T A district is contiguous.
So is that, would that go chapel and Highland and down parts of Great Plains from like.
They're looking at a loop, they're looking at a loop that might wrap, for example, the municipal parking lot behind um. The C V S block. Jump across the street to the car dealership. Um, grab the industrial parcel there and they grab some of the.
And what would the?
And it would go down, excuse me, if I inter, but it would go down Garden Street and that would be the connector.
Yeah.
It would go down Garden Street, where it was just mostly developed with the Needham Bank uh properties.
Which is down, it would easy to go down Great Plains. That.
Um.
It would, it was, I think we were thinking about it skipping around Great Plains, wouldn't it, it would, um, I think.
It does connect.
The committee's looking at the, at how that the consultant.
So what would the, what would, what would the density be, are you looking at eighteen units an acre there, or are you looking at fifty units an acre?
I think initially they're gonna model it under what the existing zoning called for, and then they'll be changing it. And this is when they model it, I think they're gonna model.
Which is what?
What's the zoning, well, the the existing zone, if the overlay does not have, does not have a density limit in terms of units per acre. It's the underlying zoning has a, has the eighteen units per acre threshold.
Eighteen.
Is it fifteen or eighteen, I'm losing my mind.
So how would, so then how would? How did fifty down an avenue get twelve units?
Because it's, in the overlay does not have that restriction. And that was built under the overlay rules. So the underlying zoning in.
So then it would have been, oh, so then why would they have had more? Than twelve units?
That's what they proposed.
The last one.
Probably a pro forma, it's really hard to do the smaller housing. Um, projects, so there's probably a pro forma, they had to increase the units.
Well, I'm surprised they didn't increase the the units to twenty.
Well, remember parking, they're also looking at parking in the property.
And right, the fourth floor had to be set back, it is a maximum of four floors. And the fourth floor had to be set back, and so they did a kind of a penthouse arrangement, so given the the setbacks and the parking and everything, the the. Building could only be of a certain size.
Right.
To accommodate a certain number of units.
Is right, I forgot about the parking limitation, which is a significant limitation, okay.
Adam, in general, I think originally we weren't looking at the central district and now. We're looking at what if it becomes a hybrid, but I I think it's based on. Um, up and not touching around town hall, but um, I think the. The the consultants have tools that can really look at it more granular, granularly. And I think the the idea is to see what makes sense once a lot of numbers are being run in different ways. So we don't have any proposal yet, we're just. Looking at the opportunity. To create contiguous, you know, housing.
So Natasha, you know well with your, you know, with your own clients that you that you work with. Like, you know. Chapel. Gardner, Highland Avenue, Great Plains. That area, you you know, is perfect and prime for transit oriented development. And I wouldn't, you know, I think you're right, that if Artie's right. You know, which is why we need to revise our parking requirements and I. But add to minimize those. Uh, requirements, and people are more encouraged to use the transit, but to increase the number of units. Cause if you can't do it there in the center of town. When you're close to all of the most significant amenities. Then what are we gonna expect of our other areas?
Well, you can do it un- un- under the overlay. You can do it under the overlay, there is no restriction, this is basically, it's the geometry of the building. Is is what is what controls you, the maximum number of units per acre doesn't apply. When you develop under the overlay, which is your higher height and density. It's the underlying district, you have two districts there, you have an Asenright district. Which has an F I R.
You're, so you're saying that where Harvey's is. And where, uh, where do, where do we go to get ice cream cake, Abbott's? So you could, you could have another four stories above Abbott's?
Um, and Abbott's, is that in the four story, I mean, there's two zones, there's a, there's a three.
A and a B.
There's an A and a B, so one district, one section lets you go four stories, the other section lets you go three stories.
Depending on the proximity to this, uh.
Depending a lot on your proximity to the town hall, but you have an underlying district, which is that center business district. With an F I R of one and a maximum height of two and a half stories or thirty-five feet.
Yes.
It is in, if you develop under the profile of those rules. Then you have this limit in terms of units per acre, if you choose to develop under the overlay rules, which give you the, the. The three stories for four stories, the F I R that goes up to two point zero, there is no limit. On the number of units that per acre that you can put in the building, it's just governed by the geometry of the building.
And there's the R two four O.
Yes, exactly.
So, would it help if I pointed to our chairman, wha- what what is being modeled? Um, this is Highland Avenue and this is the business zone where the Bertucci's Plaza is and Sudbury Farms. And so the idea is to make a connection between that. By going down Garden Street. The connection be right at that point at their uh railroad right of way, go down Garden Street. Then pick up this tiny industrial zone, it's actually Denmark Lane condominium.
Yes.
Then go over to Chestnut and there you go.
Well, I think I was talking about maybe picking up a little bit more, or maybe taking up part of the municipal parking lot behind C V S.
Okay.
I I understand.
And uh, so that, but they, but avoiding this area for now. In 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 the modeling, we see how that modeling works.
So I think modeling's nice, but the point I'm getting at is there's a difference between compliance. And actually having enough. Flexibility in the regulatory environment that will produce. The goals that we're looking to achieve. To get more cars off the road by getting more people to use transportation. And so if it's too, if it's too limited and it sounds like it's gonna be really liberal. But I, you know, and and I, and I, I hope, I hope that it is.
I think this is for Asenright, this is for Asenright housing down to the ground. Um, and so I think, I think the initial path is gonna be to. Allow it um under the rules of the underlying district. Um, and so that, um.
So by special permit.
By special permit, you get mixed use.
Yep, see, if if we required the development to be mixed use, but some changes were made. Uh, to the guidelines in response to concerns raised by Newton, saying, alright, alright. You you can count some of those units. Um. Um, but but when I pointed out on the limited area that we're gonna try to use to make the connection, that would be where. Um, multi-family housing would be allowed on a lot is the only use.
And then, so I I would like to encourage the home committee then. To. To think very carefully and to encourage mixed use. You know, in, you know, in the, I, not, uh, not by special permit, but by right. In that over, you know, in that overlay district. I'll, I'll call you up, uh, not tonight, but. Uh, later in the week. Um. But that's, uh, I understand what you're saying, you're saying that. It's just basically parking. An F I R in the geometry of the lot.
In the overlay.
Yeah.
It doesn't have that unit limit. For mixture.
I'll be encouraged to see how it evolves, um. Uh, anything else to report in, Artie or Natasha, Jean or Paul? Okay. So, uh, the correspondence we've received. Uh, includes an email from, um, uh, Stephen Frail did it November twenty-eighth. Leading to our discussion of a pending solar. Uh, or pending, pending solar bylaw, Alex. Can you please flag that and include it in our packet when we next talk about solar? He has some very good points in that email about. Trying to keep this thing as simple as possible. For passage, uh. We received an, uh, I. Note, Needham has received a notice from the City of Newton's planning director. Informing neighbors, which would be the town of Needham, of a development plan in Newton to build three hundred and seven apartments. The date of the notice was October twenty-seven and the due date for comments was November seventeen. The town manager's office received an email on Saturday from Scott Schwartz. Asking about details of the proposed redevelopment of the Linden Chambers project. Who forwarded the email to the planning staff. Uh, and to the staff from the Needham Housing Authority. Um. That concludes our correspondence, the next item on our agenda is an executive session, yeah.
As, just as you asked with regard to the email about solar, that'd be included in our packet, this should be included in the packet for tomorrow night's meeting, shouldn't it? Is it too late?
Solar?
No, 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 for uh.
The Needham Housing. Meeting, meeting with Needham Housing Authority, I mean, it's relevant to that.
I didn't do a packet for tomorrow, and also, I think. I I I can, it would be the agenda in this, although I guess I can put some of the presentation materials in it if you'd like.
Cause isn't that the forum at which this comment would be, can, would be.
Right.
Heard it, otherwise.
Ross's comments, Ross's emails as well.
Yeah, we could say, you know, we aren't really treating it like a hearing, uh, but we can add it, we can do that.
Weren't, weren't treating it like a hearing?
It's not a hearing.
We, we feel like I could inform it.
That's true, excuse me.
We're gonna have a presentation and people were gonna ask.
Excuse me, that, you're right, it is not a hearing.
We did a meeting, so that's how we, we don't usually do packets for them, I guess, it's like Zoom.
So, um, doesn't hurt to.
Hmm.
That makes the information available.
Staff.
I I understand that, but the purpose of. The meeting is to be able to provide the, you know, materials and the information for the publics and their forums, if they may would be. Um. Thank you for bringing that up. Um. So, this now lets. Uh, Paul and Natasha enjoy the rest of their evening.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Joe, on some, on some of these minutes.
On some, on some of these minutes, um.
We're not there yet.
Oh, I thought, no, no, but we're, no, but that's why you're gonna let them go, because we're getting to the executive session all these minutes. I thought Paul was at the meetings for all these minutes.
So Paul was present at 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 a lot of those meetings.
Yeah, but after my discussions with Chris Heath, I don't think it's appropriate for me to.
Correct. He continues to reuse.
Okay, even though you, even though you mentioned it. I was there, but I don't think I should be voting.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, good point, Ernie. Natasha and Paul, I invite you to enjoy the rest.
Well, I think that um we should have a motion. I would like to hear a motion to go into executive session and then to adjourn this meeting.
That we can leave, Fred, and not come back. Yeah.
Otherwise Natasha and I would have to come back in.
No, you wouldn't. Actually, you wouldn't. We had three members.
Um.
And I and I and I have that. I was gonna get to the motion.
Okay.
So.
So before we leave.
Yeah.
We'll get to the motion to go into executive session.
Okay, so I uh I have it here. I to move into executive session. But I put up a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight uh subsection uh twenty-one uh purpose seven. Uh and then to adjourn this meeting directly from the executive session without the need to return to this main meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion by Jean. We have a second by Natasha.
The only discussion, we can do that. The only discussion is there are minutes here of three twenty-eight and four twelve and twenty-two. I was not on the planning board at those meetings.
I understand.
So so if we have the minutes, we can't. How are, how are they gonna be voted? Can they be voted? Well, you, yes, you can still be a member of the quorum to hold the meeting. And then the vote will be two, two to
Two.
And one and one extension. Okay, okay. Just be sure, okay?
Good.
We're good.
Clarity clarity, clarity is important. All right, uh any further discussion? Here and now I'll come to the vote.
No, before we, before I leave, I should sign the A and R.
Mm-hmm.
So give me, give me thirty seconds.
Uh, can we still vote on the motion?
Yes.
Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Natasha, have a lovely evening. Thank you very much. See you tomorrow morning.
Okay. I will, I'll be calling in via Zoom tomorrow morning, but then tomorrow night I think I'm able to attend in person. I'm feeling better.
Okay, great.